Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of council. Are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest this evening? I see none. Then we will move on to the approval of the council minutes, looking for mover and seconder for the council meeting held December the 12th. Counselor Verbeke and Counselor Wilkinson supports discussion on that motion. All in favor of that motion? Opposed? Carried. Is there any business arising out of those minutes? I see none. There are no courts revision, no public meetings, so we go right directly to reports of staff and delegations. This evening we have two reports. The first one is one regarding the Leamington Pollution Control Center old facility demolition.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, members of council. This report is to recommend increasing the capital budget for the PCC old facility demolition project by $200,000 to address identified asbestos abatement. In August of 2016, council approved the demolition project, which included above and below grade demolition of 20 onsite buildings and one offsite sampling shed. In preparation for the capital project, a designated substance survey was completed, which identified lead paint, PCB ballast, and mercury switches throughout the site. At that time, no asbestos-containing materials were identified. However, the survey had various limitations for identifying materials that were hidden, non-accessible, or covered. This included areas such as ceiling spaces, basements, confined spaces, and roof structures. And in addition, the assessment did not include demolition of masonry, drywall, concrete walls, or finished floors to view sealed conditions. In 2008, there was also some asbestos abatement completed in the old administration building and effluent partial flume by Adams Industrial Insolations. Demolition of the plant and structures commenced on September 27th. The contractor has made good progress to date, however, has identified various suspect asbestos-containing materials, including buried transite pipe vermiculite in the cinder block walls, blast black mastic on roof and flashings, transite ceiling panels, duct wrap, and black tile floor adhesive. Belfour Environmental was retained for asbestos abatement, and pinions sampled and analyzed all suspect materials. Sample results confirmed that there was asbestos present in each of the eight locations that are identified in the report. In order to properly demolish the building structures, the asbestos requires removal. The buried pipes could remain in place, however, at this time, administration is recommending proper removal and disposal of all asbestos that has been found on site. If the pipes are not removed in conjunction with this project, the municipality would have to address the removal at a future date, which could result in additional costs. And in addition to this, burying a designated substance for future generations to deal with is not the right thing to do. The original capital budget for this project was approximately $1.8 million. Including money spent and allocated to date, the remaining budget is estimated to be approximately $175,000. Upon identifying the asbestos, the contractor was asked to submit detailed pricing for asbestos abatement in each building and for each buried pipe. The contractor received estimates from two abatement contractors, Belfour Environmental and Pyro Clean. Belfour's costs were approximately 57% lower. The original contract included a $100,000 contingency budget for unexpected items that were anticipated with the nature of a demolition project, including variable field conditions and limited historical information. Administration expected that the majority of the contingency budget would be used, but however, we did not expect to uncover $200,000 in asbestos abatement work. At this time, administration is requesting $200,000 in additional capital funding to pay for the asbestos abatement and allow PCC to retain the $100,000 contingency funds that were originally allocated to the project. Assuming the contingency budget and these additional funds are fully consumed, the capital budget for the project will have a deficit of approximately $25,000. Those additional costs would be proposed to be funded through the PCC reserve account. And the recommendation before you is for council to approve an increase to the demolition capital budget in the amount of $200,000. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions from council? Counselor Hammond?
Your worship, thank you. Shannon, you know, I agree that this asbestos has got to be removed immediately, you know, in order to try to save some future costs. But I would have thought, given the age of the buildings and the property, that Dillon Construction would have anticipated finding asbestos. I mean, it comes as a, not as a shock that it's there, but as a shock to the amount of $200,000 worth. And again, to go back to my statement, I would have thought that they would have anticipated and maybe could have looked even further to find out whether there was or wasn't asbestos on site.
What I can say is a lot of the buried pipes obviously are concealed, right? So they couldn't find those in their investigations. The roof structures were not accessed, so that was another point that was not accessible during the survey. I mean, we could have gotten into reviewing drawings and such during the designated substance survey, but that's usually outside of the scope of those types of projects. And I do agree, we did anticipate this to happen. We didn't anticipate this much. It would have been nice to know upfront, but I think because we're still relatively close to our original budget price, that we should be okay moving forward.
Counselor Dunn?
Through you, your worship.
Shannon, my question is regarding the asbestos and being 50%, 57% lower in price. With asbestos being such a very volatile item that we have to be dealt with, can this come back on us in any way if it's not being disposed of properly?
No, they've provided their actual work breakdown and the type of, there's three different types of abatement that they can do, type one, two, and three. So they provided us with that scope of work and how they've been dealing with it. The WDS bins that are on site are lined, they're being properly handled and closed up prior to being chucked offsite. And I actually spoke with WDS today about the disposal, so that we're handling that properly.
Further questions? Moved by Counselor Jacobs, support by Counselor Dunn. Discussion on the motion, all in favor and carried. Thank you. Next report is one regarding the scheduling of council meetings. Ms. Percy?
The report before you is with respect to scheduling of council meetings for 2017. Paragraph 4.1 of Bylaw 28913 sets out that regular council meetings are to be held at 6:00 PM on the first three Mondays in each month, which are not public holidays. Paragraph 7 sets a curfew for dealing with council business no later than 11:00 PM unless all members present consent to an extension. In 2016, there were 34 council meetings, with an average meeting duration of 1 hour and 16 minutes. As a result of the recent delegation of authority bylaw passed at council's December 12th council meeting, it's anticipated that the business before council will lessen as matters of routine administrative or minor nature are addressed by administration. Given the anticipated short duration of council meetings, administration is recommending that the number of meetings scheduled be reduced from three meetings per month to two meetings per month. Regular meetings are being, sorry, regular meetings are recommended to be held on the second and fourth Monday of each month unless such Monday is a public holiday or civic holiday, in which case the meeting shall be held at the same hour on the next following day, being a Tuesday. This schedule does not preclude council from scheduling of special or emergency meetings should a meeting be required. Section 7 states that no item of business may be dealt with at a council meeting or committee meeting after 11:00 PM unless all members present consent to an extension. On September 23rd, 2013, the council procedural bylaw was amended to reflect a 6:00 PM start time. Given the earlier start time, it seems reasonable to amend the curfew time to 10:00 PM. This does not preclude council from extending the time by way of a motion and a majority vote at that meeting. A schedule of council meetings will continue to be prepared annually, posted on the website for public information. Administration will also advertise the change in the local paper and provide notification to CFTV Community Focus Television. So the recommendation before council is that the council procedural bylaw 28913 be amended to reflect the change of the council meeting dates, which are to be held on the second and fourth Monday in each month unless such Monday shall be a public or civic holiday, in which case council shall meet at the same hour on the next following day, which is not a public or civic holiday, and that no item of business be dealt with at a council or committee meeting after 10:00 PM unless all members present consent to an extension.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Jacobs?
Thank you, your worship. Just for information purposes, I know that previously when our council meetings, like we were going on for several hours in some of them, and lately it seems that, as the clerk has just identified, our meetings are averaging about an hour now or something like that, a little better than an hour. Where, or like, what happened during this transition that we're seeing less and less coming to council, or is there, you know, I know that we're looking at from the last meeting we had, that some of the planning issues and so forth will be handled by administration. But it seems to me that our previous meetings were quite lengthy, and then suddenly they've seemed to dwindle and dwindle in time. And I guess, is there a reason for it, or are we becoming more efficient in areas, or like?
Far more efficient.
Oh, yeah, okay. Anyway, yeah, if you would, please.
I can't speak to the time prior to two and a half years ago, but I would suggest that a lot of this comes back to having both council and administration on the same page, working towards the same goals. We set the strategic goals in January of 2015. We renewed them in 2016. And so when administration can understand where council wants to go and brings reports that reflect the direction that council is looking for, controversy does not exist at the same rate. I would suggest that it's because, well, we are efficient, we have good reports, council does their homework, which can make a big difference as well, the council becomes prepared. But I think a great deal of it is that administration and council are on the same page, and it makes for a much stronger and more efficient team.
Counselor Verbeke?
Your worship, thanks. And Brenda's opening statements, she said for the year 2017, is this just a trial, or is this ongoing then? Is it just for 2017 we're doing this?
The recommendation would be to amend the procedural bylaw, so it would be going forward.
Deputy Mayor?
Well, quite honestly, I'm not a really big fan of this. I understand our meetings have not been long, but I also find that when we have the marathon meetings, I find them a little more difficult to deal with, because usually when there's a marathon meeting, there's more than just a few minor things on our plate. We find that there's lots of things, and some of them controversial, and sometimes with lots of public input. I find then that those meetings, once I get to nine o'clock, I find it really difficult to, having assimilated all this information from six till nine, I find it really difficult to make a decision after nine o'clock that I feel that I've put my 110% towards. So I can't say that I'm a fan of this. I also feel that the third meeting, it just seems like such a really long break in between the last meeting of the month and then the next one. I'm just, this is not sitting particularly well with me. I guess that's all I can say. I just feel like there's more of a disconnect. I like the fact that I get to sit and debate three times a month, if you will, with my counselors. Yeah, maybe we don't have as much to discuss, maybe we've hit a bit of a plateau in that there hasn't been anything controversial. But that's not to say that in six months or 12 months, we aren't going to get into that again. I don't know, I just feel like, and don't take this the wrong way, but I feel like the delegation of authority has taken a little bit away, if you will, and now this as well. I really feel that there will be a sense of disconnect for myself anyway, not meeting as often a month.
Counselor Wilkinson?
Thank you, your worship. I guess my comment or question is more into the content that's going to be filling our meetings going forward. Since we passed the delegation, sorry, since we passed the delegation of authority bylaw last week, and we're removing a lot of the minor in nature matters that we dealt with, which sometimes I question, you know, why were we getting involved when it was just the legal, yeah, procedural, you know, why did we have to approve it? Anyway, now we're removing those, which is going to free up time, I understand. I was hoping that we would be filling that void, though, with matters of, you know, bigger in nature, you know? If we were averaging an hour and 16 minutes per meeting before, and we want to switch to two weeks now, but we're taking the minor in nature stuff out, maybe our new meetings every other week would be two and a half hours at that point, but it would be kind of new business, is what I was hoping would happen since we passed that bylaw last week. That was kind of what I took from that when I voted on it last week. I thought, I agree with you, I thought it was good to take that away from us. But I was hoping we put some more meat and potatoes into our meetings when we did meet, if it's every other week, is my comment on this.
Well, we won't know until we do it. So, you know, and to answer that just really quickly that way, and then to the deputy mayor's comment, I know what you're saying, because after three hours of batting things back and forth, it is kind of a little bit wearing at times. But to me, then, we simply, we as council simply change our strategy of how we handle our council meetings, and that motion to defer to and ask for a special meeting the following week is always an option there for us. And if, I think if we find ultimately that we can't handle it in two meetings, we simply come back and change the policy back to three meetings per month, which I'm not sure will have any trouble with, but it's, and I don't think administration will either. So Counselor Hammond?
Your worship, thank you. You know, I share some of the same concerns as our deputy mayor, McDonald. It will lead to a bit of disconnect, but by the same token, our last, I'll say at least our last five meetings, I mean, we're taking bets on whether or not they're going to last a half hour or longer. Right now, we're sitting with six or seven, you know, administration people here, their time could be spent doing something, I think, more productive. And so I understand the need for, you know, and for me, it's kind of like I'm missing out an opportunity to do some networking, especially with these people, you know, you can ask questions once in a while, because we don't get to see them a great deal. So having said that, both sides of it, I understand the need for cutting back to two, and I especially like the fact that we keep an open mind and, you know, if we could eliminate the word, if we could eliminate the word emergency and just stick with just a special meeting, you know, where we can call the third meeting in the event that we need it, I would certainly welcome that opportunity.
Peter?
One of the things that this does is that it does provide consistency in meetings. It becomes far more predictable, knowing that we're going to have a meeting the second and the fourth Monday, and if either of those is encumbered by a holiday, that it's the next day. As opposed to what we have now, where we can have meetings in the first three Mondays, the fourth Monday is off, but then we have another holiday, and we end up where we're three weeks before we're back, before, able to be back before council. And so sometimes there are issues where we are, we're pushing hard to get the reports out so that we can get it in front of council, because we know we have a large lag that's coming. So what this does is it creates predictability for administration and the people who have issues that are going to be brought before administration. With respect to the potential for disconnect, I think that there is also an opportunity for administration to find ways to communicate to council those things that are going on that don't require a decision. For example, we have, we provide you with reports with respect to building permits. We could do the same with respect to site plans, so that we can provide a monthly or quarterly report that says, here are the properties upon which site plans have been approved, and here are the things that are going on, so that those items that don't require decisions on behalf of council, but are of interest to council, especially as it relates to development and meeting the goals of our strategic plan, administration can take, can ensure that we communicate either through email or in any other way that council chooses. But we will endeavor to make sure that the information still reaches council's ears, especially those things that are, that connect well to our strategic plan and are important to council.
Counselor Jacobs?
Thank you, your worship. Going along with deputy mayor, and I see where she's coming from, I think it's great. When you say hello to someone or you're on a face-to-face basis, I think that's important. But I'd like to pick up on Counselor Verbeke's comment there at the start was, can we do this as an interim? Set a time limit on it, say six months or up to a year, and we give it, then come back and look at it? I know that we can change it at any time, but if we do have a specific time limit on it, it's more apt to come to us, where we can really evaluate what we've done and if it's working and if it's accepted by the, by the rest of the councilors.
There are policies, so yes, it's council wish, if that's the kind of thing you want to do, so. All right, so then I would just need a motion to amend the recommendation that's on here to include that, right? If you're willing to move the recommendation.
I would make the recommend, or move or motion that we revisit this within one year period of time. We go to two council meetings for a period of one year, at which time we revisit it, or whatever the terminology is that you wish to apply to it.
Okay. Support by counsel, no? Support by Counselor Verbeke with comment?
Your worship, thanks. So you're leaving the recommendation it is and just putting in another clause in there saying, review it after a year?
Yes.
Okay, so we're still going to go with the two? That's fine, that's okay.
Yep. I had a question to come back to you, though, because I noted it in the report, it says that no item of business will be dealt with after 10:00 PM unless all members present consent to an extension. But during your discussion, you said the majority of council, so it is unanimous support, right? That's the way we always understood it, that to go past the hour, it had to be unanimous support.
So it would be all those members that are present, it would need to be unanimous?
Okay, good. Just, I just wanted to clarify that, so. Okay, so does everybody understand what we're looking at here, the change of policy to two meetings, the second and the fourth, that we start at six and at 10:00? And we'll review it after a year's time to see if it's worked for us or not? And to be honest with you, if it doesn't work in the first six months, I think we'll know, and we can certainly come back, and, but you're setting a time limit, that is fine. Any further?
Or maybe you could amend it to say it at any time?
No, I'll just leave it in a year's time, because if it's not working, I think we'll all know it, and we can deal with that at that time. Okay? Questions? All in favor of that motion, then? Opposed and carried? Next item is matters for approval. Minutes of their youth advisory committee held November the 8th, moved by Counselor Verbeke, supported by Counselor Hammond. Discussion on the motion, all in favor and carried? And then we're moving into other matters for approval, which were none were listed. Report on closed session by our clerk.
A closed meeting was held at 5:45 prior to the open session of council pursuant to subsection 239-2E of the municipal act for the purpose of considering confidential report LLS 6116 regarding OMB report update. Proper notice of the meeting was given, and the meeting adjourned at 6:03 PM.
We have consideration of bylaws.
Bylaw 70-16 being a bylaw to provide for improvements to the 10th concession drain west of the Reed Drain in Part Lot 6, Concession 9, in the municipality of Leamington, County of Essex, and that's for third and final reading. Bylaw 87-16 being a bylaw to amend bylaw 28913 as amended, being a bylaw to provide procedural rules for the conduct of meetings of the municipal council and its committees. And bylaw 88-16 being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council of the municipality of Leamington at its meeting held December 19th, 2016.
Looking for a mover and seconder? Counselor Dunn and Counselor Hammond. Discussion on the motion, all in favor and carried? There were no notices of motion circulated, so we're into open session for council. Counselor Hammond?
Your worship, thank you. I'd like to be the first to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, and hopefully you have a healthy and happy and safe New Year, and we'll see you all back here in the first of the year.
Thank you very much. Counselor Dunn?
I also want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas. I also want to thank Counselor Hammond for inviting me to the Salvation Army, handing off the gift baskets today, with the help of the Salvation Army, the Toys for Tots, the Goodfellas, the firefighters, and so many great people in our community that put that all together for the needy and people financially challenged. It was really neat, because I did actually get to put a bag of surprises on a little boy's lap, and the smile that hit his face was just breathtaking, and what a great community we have, because all the people come together and you see things flying back and forth. And it was my first year doing this, but the number of people that have done this for year in, year out, the volunteers we have in our community, the unsung heroes of our community that have been doing this for a year, for 20, 30 years, it just is quite breathtaking, and I just, it was quite an honor to be a part of that, and I just, I think we've got a great community, and Merry Christmas to everyone.
Thank you very much. Counselor Verbeke?
Your worship, thanks. On Wednesday, December the 14th, I attended a Frag Mities workshop held at the Civic Center. It was well-attended by other municipalities except for ours. There has been an emergency registration for a chemical that was used surprisingly by helicopter in Long Point and Rondo. I just hope that you can attend the other one. The great speakers, Luanne was there, Kenvay from Kingsville, and I was really impressed that Kingsville gives $85,000 a year in their budget just to deal with Frag Mities. So I'll be putting that forward later. Other than that, there is a meeting scheduled in 2017, so it'll probably be later. I won't even wait for debatable stuff, so I just, on behalf of myself, my family, it's great working with you guys. Hopefully the new year brings new challenges and new stuff, staff. It's great working with you and everybody else. Wish you Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Counselor Wilkinson?
Thank you, your worship. Same goes for us. Our family wishes everyone a Merry Christmas and a safe and Happy New Year. Same to our staff and our camera people, and Bill, thank you. Merry Christmas. Absolutely. Merry Christmas, everyone.
Counselor Jacobs?
I also take this opportunity to wish everyone the best and have a very great Merry Christmas and happy holidays whichever way. And especially to the staff, it's been great working with you guys, and, you know, and as I said earlier, maybe our meetings were shorter, but things are getting done, and it's much appreciated, and the fellowship and the friendship that goes along with working with all these individuals has been fantastic, and looking forward to that again in the new year, and Merry Christmas to everyone.
Excellent, thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Merry Christmas.
There has been an emergency registration for a chemical that was used surprisingly by helicopter in Long Point and Rondo. I just hope that you can attend the other one, the great speakers, Luanne was there, Canvey from Kingsville, and I was really impressed that Kingsville gives $85,000 a year in their budgets just to deal with Frag Mighties. So I'll be putting that forward later. Other than that, there is a meeting scheduled in 2017, so it'll probably be later. I won't even wait for debatable stuff, so I just, on behalf of myself, my family, it's great working with you guys. Hopefully, the new year brings new challenges and new stuff, staff. It's great working with you and everybody else. Wish you Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Counselor Wilkinson?
Thank you, your worship. Same goes for us. Our family wishes everyone a Merry Christmas and a safe and Happy New Year. Same to our staff and our camera people, and Bill? Thank you. Merry Christmas? Absolutely. Merry Christmas, everyone.
Counselor Jacobs?
I also take this opportunity to wish everyone the best, and have a very great Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays, whichever way. And especially to the staff, it's been great working with you guys, and, you know, and as I said earlier, maybe our meetings were shorter, but things are getting done, and it's much appreciated, and the fellowship and the friendship that goes along with working with all these individuals has been fantastic, and looking forward to that again in the new year, and Merry Christmas to everyone.
Excellent, thank you. Deputy mayor?
Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. With the tumultuous year globally, we'll hope for peace, as well as Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to those people that have never had it, and thankful hearts to those of us who have. So, anyway, all the best.
Okay, and ultimately me, Merry Christmas to everyone as well, staff and council members alike. We've all said the same thing to each other, and so I know we all feel the same, and it's awesome. And it's been a great year working with you, and I look forward to the next two, so. A couple of things I do want to mention, Friday, December 16th, we did the ribbon cutting for the Leamington Hospital's CT scanner, which is huge news for our municipality since it's one of two, I think, in Ontario, and we are a demonstration hospital now for this machine for all the other hospitals to come and see what we are doing in our little town. Also on Saturday, Counselor Hammond and Deputy Mayor McDonald and I were at the Habitat for Humanity ribbon cutting for the new house. It was fun to see that family get it, and certainly thrilled to see it. Beautiful home on a lot in Leamington, so it was pretty cool. And a little selfishly here, happy birthday to my mom, she turned 90 on Sunday, so. I was going to do this under statements non-debatable, but I'll do this under open session if I can, and Mary Ann, if you could do me the favor. Little hard to see, but this is Major Terry Langs. And many months ago, we were contacted by a department in the military, Canadian military, to tell us about this gentleman's retirement. So after 36 years and three months of loyal, dedicated, and distinguished service to the Canadian Forces Military Police Branch, the CAF in Canada, Major Terry Langs will retire and transition into a new career as a house husband. I like that comment. So you're probably wondering, why the heck am I talking about this guy? Well, Major Terry Langs was originally from Leamington, Ontario, and had been in the military for a long, long time, two tours of Afghanistan. He was seconded to the Department of Foreign Affairs in 2009, assumed the position of commanding officer of the military police service, and following his retirement, will be remaining in the Ottawa area with his lovely wife, Joanne, his two daughters, and Sarah Jordan. So when we were contacted, Mary Ann fired this one through to me, I thought, wow, this is so cool, somebody from Leamington, and they were asking if there's some sort of recognition we did. So we did send, as you can see by the photo, one of our frame certificates of appreciation and recognition from our municipality, our council, and our staff, and our town. And the picture they sent back was kind of fun. I didn't realize they were going to do this, but they tried to tie in his hometown area by putting up all the tomato stuff, and whether it's Highbury, well, I'm thinking it's the older guy with the mustache. Anyway, I just wanted to share that with council, so those are some of the things that you don't know that I do on a regular basis. In Ottawa. Absolutely, not, no. It had crossed my mind to go up there to represent the town, but I thought, oh, it's just too much time, too much money, and so they were more than thrilled with what we did by the response that we got from the military. So, thank you very much for putting us in touch, so. All right, anything else under open session? If not, then we'll move on to statements non-debatable. Counselor Dunn?
Through you, your worship. I was just going to, I seen in the news about St. Michelle and how they sent the 68 totes of stuff up 600 kilometers north of Thunder Bay to some First Nations, and it was really well-welcome from Leamington, Ontario. Just, it's really great what our community does, so I just thought they should get a mention about that. Quite amazing.
Very good. Just finally, too, with council's permission, I've talked to all of you about this, I will be forwarding a letter when I have the wording exactly how I want it to the Essex County Library Board, making our position rather clear that we do not want to accept any type of temporary library services at any of our municipal facilities, and we will be readily accepting of full library services once the strike is settled, and I'll leave it at that. Other than that, ladies and gentlemen, looking for a motion to adjourn? Counselor Verbiki, Counselor Jacobs, discussion on the motion, all in favor, and carried.